Good evening and welcome to the show Born Political. I'm your host Joe Dela Cruz. You know, tonight we have a guest that actually is political. I know we've been going back and forth the last few weeks. I interviewed my mom, I've interviewed people that are out and about town, Park and Rec, the Thrive 55 director. I've been enjoying this show to a level that I never thought that I would. When I first started it, I knew what the goal was, that I was gonna actually put up, instead of having the label on folks that we know around town, to actually get, let the town know who they are. Cause I think that's the more important part. Cause a lot of times when you're reading posts on Facebook, or maybe things even in the newspaper, it'll just say, "This person is this because of I think that", without really knowing who the person is. Just judging them on certain different, you know, something you read in the paper. And I certainly have been blessed to know a lot of people around town. And I know a lot of the folks that have articles written about them, or social media posts that are posted about them. And it usually never reflects the person that they are. And that's, that could be anyone. It could be a town employee. It could be anyone. And I've been blessed to be able to do this show. I've just been really happy. It's my sixth show. This week, I'm excited because last week I had, two weeks ago, we had the mayor. And this is my first town counselor. I'm being interviewed and I'm sure I'm gonna have a bunch more town counselors on. But we have a lot of people that we're gonna go through. And it's gonna, just to spread it out a little bit. I want to welcome to the show tonight, Council Rachel Franco. Council Franco, Rachel, welcome to the show.
Well, thanks for having me.
So I don't know if you've seen the show before, or you may have seen one episode or two, maybe none, like most people. But a lot of this is gonna be about you and who you are. And you know, I think I know a little bit more about you because you actually went to school with my wife. I know that you're a Fitch girl when I was a New London guy, around the same time that we were going to school. But were you originally from Groton? Are you, did you move from somewhere or are you just a hometowner?
No, I'm from Groton.
That's it, huh?
I am from Groton. I've lived in many areas of Groton. When I was young, I, we started off, my family, in Paquann Bridge. My grandparents lived there. My mother grew up in there. And I grew, I was born in Paquann Bridge. I've lived, and then we moved from there. We've gone over to High Rock Trailer Park, 31D Street. We moved from there. We've gone to the city of Groton on Georgia Avenue. And did a little, my parents moved for a small stint down to Florida in Jacksonville. Six months.
You were with them?
I was with them. I was young.
Okay.
And six months, then came back, back to Midway Oval in Paquann Bridge. And my father, who's a disabled veteran, did receive a payout from the federal government for Agent Orange. And my parents bought a home in Mystic, in Bel Air, on Daniel Brown Drive. And that's where I was from.
How old were you then?
Probably junior high to high school.
Okay.
And then I, you know, became a young adult, moved out into an apartment in Mystic. And then bought my first home in Fieldcrest.
Wow.
And then moved from there into my current home on Topsail Lane, in between Butler and Cutler School. So I have lived all over Groton, a lot of areas.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone could be more Groton than that. I feel like I'm a Groton guy because I know the area well. But you've lived in every area, pretty much, it sounds like. Other than maybe, with the exception of Noank and Navy Housing.
Right with that, yes.
Wow, that's kinda cool.
Yeah, all over the place, yes.
And I think when people will see you out and about, or maybe see you on the council, a lot of people associate you, that you grew up where you are today. I think it happens to me too. A lot of people think that I'm from Groton just because I'm always in town. They always see me around, but I'm actually a New London guy. So do you get that? Do you get that from the family? People say, "Ah, you don't, you know, you've never been on my side of town and you don't know." And you can actually let them know that you actually lived on their side of town.
That is true. People think, because I live in Mystic, that I've always lived in Mystic, and that's not the case at all. When they talk about Paquann Bridge, I mean, I know what they're talking about. I fully understand, or you know, the city, or somebody from the trailer park. And you know, they think, they get overlooked. And I'm like, no, I understand, you know, where you are and where you're coming from. I get it.
And that's good. And you, so to me, when you get elected as a counselor, a lot of people, I see this up in Hartford all the time. You come from a completely different walk of life. If you're someone from Stanford or Norwalk, and you've led a different life. And they come in and they have to really meet us. And we can explain to them the actual problems that happen in different areas. Stuff that, with challenges we have in Groton, in New London, challenges we have in Eastern Connecticut. You kinda, especially being a town counselor, you have all these challenges. Not that you have to find out and find what they are. They've been embedded in you. And I think it's probably an advantage when you're, when you're at the council making decisions, that you kind of, you're kind of making decisions for four different Rachels. People that lived in different areas. So that's kinda neat.
Yeah, I agree. I understand all different dynamics of Groton.
Yep. And then your fam, so your family, you have brothers and sisters?
I'm an only child.
Oh wow, only child.
Yes.
So that's, so you have, that is in common with my wife, who's also a Groton girl. So you have only child syndrome, you think? Or do you have no syndromes like that?
No, no, I don't think so. I don't think I was spoiled. Actually, my father, because I was, I was a girl, and my dad enjoyed going to football games and baseball games and race, you know, race cars and boxing matches and wrestling. And I was the one that went with him everywhere to all those things, so.
Well, that's kinda cool though.
Yeah, so.
So you were his little boy and his little girl.
I was, sort of was. I think he's the one who, you know, he instilled in me some very good things. You know, to be tough and not to take things from people and stand up for what you believe in.
Yep.
And you know, he was a disabled veteran, so you know, working wasn't something that he was capable of doing. From, you know, things that he had gone through in Vietnam and Agent Orange and PTSD and things of that nature. And my mother was the working person in our family. So I also looked it up to her and she set the stage of, this is what you do. This is, you know, being, I mean, when I was young, we were very poor. I mean, Paquann Bridge, we were very poor. And you know, I wanted things in life and she taught me, you need to work really hard for these things.
Yep.
And that's what I've done, very hard.
And I think, because it's funny, the first like three shows I did, unbeknownst to me, including my mother, myself, Judge Keppel, and I think, I don't know, I don't know if I'm wrong, but we're all middle children. My mom was the middle of nine, I'm the middle of three. And I think a lot of my political being and experience came from arbitrating between my older brother and younger sister and being able to handle that. So as an only child, I think, did you have cousins that you were kinda?
Yeah, I had cousins that I played with.
So you had that kind of relationship?
Yes, yes. I had cousins. We played together, you know, growing up. And we're still, you know, close and spend holidays together and, you know.
But your buddy was your dad then?
My buddy was my dad, yeah.
And that's really cool because that, so now, now, I don't, you know, politically, just in your home, is your dad, you know, did he talk politics at all? Or you guys pretty much just more football and baseball and fun or?
There were political things, but maybe not on a national level or actual politics. There were different things and, you know, you know, and he, at certain times, raced some race cars. And of course, you know, there's politics in those type of things.
Politics and racing, really?
It's not just driving a race car and winning. There's a lot of other politics involved in behind the scenes.
Absolutely.
Those type of things and, you know, how to deal with things and how to, you know, negotiate and how to work through things to make people happy and.
And I think nothing sharpens your political chops either than, than something like car racing. Because everyone does think it's just a sport. But there is no sport that's just a sport.
No.
Especially, I mean, you've done, your experience with youth baseball. I know your son personally. I know your husband very well. That's my igloo buddy.
Yes.
But basically, this is a, you guys are a baseball family. That's how, when we first met you, that's how, I mean, other than, we knew you ahead of time. But when we, when we reconnected kinda, and my wife reconnected with you, we understood and discovered that your life was about baseball. Just like Tammy and I had gone through with Joey. You guys were experiencing that. And I mean, tell us, to me, it was my best experience, my being called a coach and being able to be part of it. But to be able to watch your son and be as, like a success that he is, and not just in sports, but just being a really good human. I mean, what, how, and, because there is political moves there too.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, and we don't like talking about what happens behind the scenes in youth baseball, but it's very political.
It is very political. When they're young, I think parents expect a lot. And then you have parents who, in Little League, there's parents that are on the board and there's parents that are coaching. And so it creates sometimes some tensions and issues. And you have to negotiate and navigate your way through some of those things.
Yeah.
And I think at times, when mine were younger, my children were younger, I let my husband deal with that part of it and I would step aside because you can become passionate when it's your own child and.
I think that's what drives most people's passions. You'll see folks get upset when something happens to them as an adult and they're not happy about it and if it affects them directly. But if it's something that affects your kid, if your kid's sitting on a bench and he's not getting any playing time, or if, if the coach isn't letting him ever hit, or, so all these things come up. And that may be a great reason for it, there may be absolutely no reason for it. Maybe the coach is overlooking your son or daughter. But, but how, you know, to be able to navigate that. And I think, like, if you bring that even to the council, when you're legislating, to me, it's like, okay, you can, not to, I don't put people in boxes, but if I'm, if I'm in a big group that I remember exactly how one guy was in a basketball league, like everything had to be his way. The gym, practices were better if you had one hour instead of hour and a half, which I totally disagreed with. But he had his way and he was in charge of practice time. So, so I would go into a meeting for work and here's this person talking about the same thing, wanting things the same way. And I'd be able to put that person in a box and try to deal with them in the same way I did. Say, negotiate, okay, how about an hour and 15 minutes instead of an hour? You know, so a lot of my political work came through youth sports, believe it or not.
Right.
So I mean, but how do you see it when you're?
Well, I didn't coach, so I'm in a different position. But I will say, there was a time where my son was not picked for All-Stars while he was on Little League. And he came to me and he's like, "Mom, it's because the coaches are the dads and they pick their kids and their friends' kids, you know, the friends." And so what I said to him, I'm like, "Don't get angry about it." I'm like, "You know what you have to do? Work hard. Work really hard and get better. Be so good that they have to pick you."
Yep.
And that's exactly what he did.
Yeah.
And then he's carried this. And so he stands on his own with his abilities. So I don't need to get involved. Those are, I try and teach him the lessons that he can bring forward in life, that he's gonna have to face challenges like these and how to deal with it.
Speaking of your son, I believe I saw a video of him lifting 405 pounds.
Oh my goodness, yes.
I thought, maybe it was, if you see Joe Dela Cruz lifting 405 pounds in a video, it's because there were plastic weights that happened to be fake.
Yes.
I can't even imagine lifting that kind of weight.
I can't either.
And I know he's playing baseball and I even, I was talking to your husband. I was talking about, you know, lifting weights and playing baseball. Because it was always, there's always, there's groups of, on both sides of, should you lift too much or not enough? And, and it seems like, if, when you watch baseball today, everyone's lifting.
I guess so. I mean, I don't know, but from what I, what he tells me, it's baseball. I mean, he pitches as well, so he's like, "It's on the legs."
Yeah.
It's the muscles, the legs. And I worry about it because, I mean, that's a lot of weight. I mean, it's deadlifting, but it's still, you know, I don't want him to get hurt from it, but.
He's young. He'll be fine.
I hope so.
You'll figure it out. So, so, you know, when we get to the bottom of who people are before we start talking about politics or what, or why you got in, we lead up to, I mean, we're leading up to why you ran. And I think, just speaking with you, this, in this short time, you are a Groton person. And a lot of people that, that kinda make their nest somewhere, envision their kids and their grandkids being able to experience the same Groton they did, or maybe a better Groton. And that's kinda how I feel now, even though I'm not a, wasn't a born and raised Groton guy and I came from the enemy over in New London, which I speak both languages. So I love both my hometowns. But I'm sure you made the decision to run. I mean, we all talk about when we first started running. And I think before, when I ran in 2016 in the council years, and even when I was on the RTM, the partisanship just wasn't there. We didn't have, you know, I could meet a Republican and we'd talk and I'd say, "I like that guy." And it, and now it's almost like we're careful about who we like and don't like because it is so divided and it doesn't really need to be. But when, so when you're running and you're probably surprised because when you got there, you're thinking, for me, when I first ran, it's like, you know, we won and it was kind of a happy feeling and I got to meet new people on both sides. And it's a little different now. So when you ran though, you were probably looking forward to, to do what? Like you got involved and you're like, is this? I, when I first got involved, I wanted to make sure they scored basketball in Groton. Because Caleb was on the basketball team. And they, at 12 years old, they were shutting the score off at halftime and then playing another half without, so the kids wouldn't know the total score and they wouldn't know who won. And that's what, that's kinda spurred me to run and go on the Park and Rec. Is there a moment or is there a thing?
Well, I think what happened with me is Trump was running in and off of us and I think that's what spurred me
Wow.
to get active politically.
Yeah.
And I had gone to a couple of meetings and they said, I heard somebody say, "If you want to do something, do it locally."
That's true.
Because that's where you can make an impact. And there's always boards and commissions in your town. They're looking for people, volunteers, all the time. And so I contacted the Groton Democrat Town Committee. I went to a meeting. I went to a couple of meetings. And then I said, "I'd like to join a Board of Commission." And I don't know exactly which one, but I'd like to really give some time here to my community. And they looked at my resume and they said, "You know what? We think you would be great at this." And I said, you know, I went home and I said, "Hey, you know what? They think I'd be really good at town council." And I talked to my husband and my family about it and what the commitment would be and what kind of impact I could possibly make and is this the right move? And I chose to do it. And then I ran and I'm now on my third term.
On your third term right now. Now, from first to third term, I know it gets easier. I remember, I remember jumping from the RTM. So I had an idea what the budget looked like. We had gone through it a bunch of times. I kinda knew who the people were that were gonna be introduced and stuff. You get elected and I think a lot of people are misinformed when they think that the council is just this thing where people meet once or twice a week and they kinda vote on stuff and kinda don't vote on stuff. I mean, were you surprised at how much work it was or were you expecting it or?
It was much more work than I expected. There's a lot more meetings. There's liaison meetings. There's a lot of reading, a lot of looking into things. When you don't get the answers, sometimes you have to look further. You have to call other people. Like if we're going to talk about, let's just say, open space. You know, I get the input from the town on what their thoughts are, but then I need to reach out to somebody else. I need to find other information to make good decisions. And I talk to people in the community as well to see where their thoughts are. And, and just to jump back, when it comes to talking to people on both sides, I don't have problems with that. And I think I've made a lot of good friends on, you know, the opposing party and the other side of the aisle. And I think, I think I draw myself nearer to people that don't make it political. They don't make it about party. They're just trying to do what's best for our community. And those are the kind of people I think I'm drawn to.
Yep.
Like, it's not.
I haven't met anybody yet in politics that, as I mean, and in Hartford, it's a little different because the, we're voting on laws that can change in effect. And the council, I certainly, I served with a bunch of different folks. And there was, there's never a person that, I said, "Man, this person ran so they could really hurt our town."
Right.
Or they ran with bad intentions, because no one does that. We all run with different, different thoughts on how to get there. And I was talking to a guest a few weeks ago and really, it's no different than if you live kinda in the, in Groton, almost near the sub base, you can go to the casino two different ways. You can go up Route 12 and over the Mohegan Peak Lot, or you can go over 32 and it's probably almost the same, same distance. You might be able to drive a little faster on 32. But we're arguing about how to get there a lot of times. And I think that the partisanship comes when we're just like, "No, no, this is the way we do it. No, that's the way we do it." And in the end, we all are just trying to go to Pepe's Pizza at the casino and have a pizza.
Right.
And, and the ultimate end, we both are probably right. Because who knows, maybe you're driving down Route 12 because you want to go by the pie place and grab a pie or you like the Dunkin' Donuts on that route. And there's reasons for what you're doing. And it's reasons that I wouldn't know why you want to go up Route 12. And you wouldn't know that when I go down Route 32, it's close to my dad's house and I can pop in. But I think, why are we fighting about that route? When we should just, you don't have to agree to disagree, but yeah, we can say, "Okay, let's prove and do a study and see whose route's quicker."
Right.
Because if, because then again, I mean, when we're legislating like you do, because that could mean a school bus route. And we don't want a driver dictating that he wants to stop by his dad's house on the way. So you want to make sure you have the shortest, most efficient route. But that's what, that's to me what politics boils down to. It's the, the negotiation part should, it should be intense and you should, there should be some arguing because I'm sure there's a reason that you want to do something a certain way. But in the end, if the, if the end result is we want to make sure our kids are, again, the funding they need for their school, let's agree that, let the bipartisanship kick in. Have nice, decent conversations and get there. And believe me, there's no bill that I've been 100% happy with since I've been in Hartford. And I'm sure there's things that you're happy past, but you're like, "Man, it could have been a little better."
Right.
If, if we were able to buy this much more land or we were able to set aside something for more school funding. So you get left sometimes wanting, but, and I know there's a lot of things you want for the town.
There are, absolutely.
You started the beautification committee. I don't know.
I did.
You wanna talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Sure. So I started the beautification committee. I think they're doing a presentation in the Paquann Bridge area. And they were calling it the Paquann Bridge Village. And they were coming up with all these ideas and how things could change. And they were showing buildings and they were asking the community to pick this kind of building, "Do you like or this kind?" And then I'm looking at it and I'm like, "You know what? This area has looked like this since I was a child." And I just don't see how we're gonna get this leap into this presentation they were trying to do. And it was a hard reach for me. And so I talked to Leanne Obray, who was the counselor at the time. And she's a real estate agent. So she's like, "You know what, Rachel?" She's like, "If you can change some things, even if it's lighting or sidewalks or you put in, you know, bushes and flowers and you change some things." She's like, "It could make such a big impact on an area." And so I said, "You know what?" And so I would drive back and forth through the area and just keep looking at things and trying to see it in a different light. And then I created the beautification committee. And it's really started for this area. Because I do happen to think that in areas of our town, they look at this, that side of town and they sort of look down on it. And, and at times, some of it's a little rundown. And it could use some spiffy and up. And actually, I think it's an up and coming area. When you see the new businesses that have gone in, The Barn.
Absolutely.
I think it's Wild Flower Salon, the new hair salon in there. There's property for sale right now, so there could be changes even coming.
Community Center you guys have going.
The community center at the, the old Fitch Middle. Claude Chester is, we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do with Claude Chester, which people are talking about a town green. I don't know if it could be there or the Burroughs Farm. I mean, so this area, there's so much happening. So that was what my inspiration for the beautification committee was for. And to start there and to grow. And I think we could grow it and bring it to like the downtown, well, what I consider to be downtown area. Like after you pass this spot going in, you know, going through.
And you've affected us already. So my neighborhood, I don't, I'm sure you remember, but I was actually not able to help you guys that day.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah, you do. My wife, my wife, I usually get, I usually get roped into doing everything, but I actually had a meeting that day or maybe a massage, one of those things. But I couldn't help. But in any case, we have these two roundabouts that are in our neighborhood. And I think we just, you drive by things. And although they may not look the best, you just continually drive by them because in your mind, there's nothing you can really do about it. It's a piece of town property. We all understand the impact that we have with taxes and we're all worried about budget. So none of us would, would say, "Let's call the town." But because of the beautification committee, it was a collaboration between not just the beautification committee, but, but there were citizens involved.
Yes.
And so they came in and did the bulk cleaning and ripped out because it really, it is the property of the town. And it was, it was not just unsightly, but a little dangerous for cars to get around. So they came and agreed to take it out and mulch it. And it was just a big flat area. But I was able to pull up and watch not just yourself as a beautification committee, but probably eight or nine Groton residents
Yes.
that met you. And I mean, I'm looking forward to the spring now. I always do. But I'm looking more forward now. What do you think that, that's gonna look like? You must, I mean, you must be excited.
I am very excited because we had another resident donate bulbs from their garden when they were thinning out their garden. They gave me a call and said, "Hey, do you want these?" And I said, "Absolutely." So I took the daffodils, planted them up at the submarine sign off the highway. So there's probably, there's over 700 daffodils planted up there now. And every time I get daffodil bulbs, I will plant them up at the submarine sign. All the remaining bulbs, which there were unbelievable amount, we came and planted them in that, those two islands. And we're not finished because in the spring, that's where we want to continue. Like we could do more bushes and some other things. And we're hoping that the residents in the neighborhood will also maintain it. Because the residents were so excited that we were doing this, that they came out and they, they were talking. And even they said they were gonna plant a, a flagpole in the middle of each island and have lights so that it would light up at night. They were just so proud of this. And that's what I think is that the beautification can spread across our town. And it's about residents also joining up. So we're not just relying on the town to do all this work, but to have residents be a part of it as well. And I will say, at the end of 117, when you hit Route 1 at that intersection, there will be a new sign. And there is a plan, and it's going to, it's, it's the Welcome Center when you're coming into the municipal area of Groton. And you know, there's going to be plantings around it and they're gonna take everything that's out there and try and spruce it up so that it's a welcoming look and it'll look nice. So I'm excited about that, so.
I love the idea of the, of working with the town and the city. I mean, even, even as a, what the pandemic taught me was the government and being a legislator, there are limitations, right? We're in this worldwide pandemic. And the way that we were able to help was knock on our elderly neighbor's door and go grocery shopping for him. Or shoveling for an elderly neighbor or somebody that is, that can't do it, that physically can't do it. Those are the little things that I think we're missing in this country overall. And the beautification committee just shines a light on it because if we can have just local residents say, "So, so now that's our little thing and you started it and we take care of it and it's a beautiful thing that people enjoy." You went over and started something else, like the sign. That's something that maybe New Yorkers are like, "Okay, listen, I want people to pull in and see that."